Good to be back. All right, is it any of our guests? You want to pull up so the sun doesn't get you? Can we all start our meeting? Has everyone had a chance to look through the last months? Any questions on anything in there? The only sad part that I saw in there was was Jesus. Yeah.
I said it wasn't bad enough. Let me bounce this to the floor now.
You know, I'm gonna pick ideas for two more minutes. Okay, do I have an approval of a minute? Changes or adjustments to it? Is there a second? Ten seconds? Thank you. We've got a lot of notes, so it's gonna take me a while to run through this stuff. Okay, my report. We've had an interesting month, two, month and a half or two months with Manny and I. We've been doing a lot of traveling. We have met with the Merrill College President and talked to him about how the college and the library could work together and help the community. And then we met with the library librarian from Pelosiapi State and did the same thing with them, with Will Buck, and talked to him about how we can be part of the Pelosiapi State's program going forward and how the library can do that. And then we met with the Massey Group, with Randy Massey and his group to see what is actually going on in downtown Merrillville and how the library can be part of downtown Merrillville's growth. I want to go over some of the things that, were you gonna cover that in your presentation?
I wasn't, but.
Okay, okay. I want to go over some of the things that maybe no one knows, or if you do know and it's repetitive, you probably know it already. But I was really blown away with what they have in mind for downtown Merrillville. Randy Massey.
There's a collection of developers. I'm just sharing.
Yeah. No, I guess, I don't know who else is. Joe.
Joe Zappa. David Shanks.
Justice Construction is part of it. Who else?
David Shanks. He's part owner of the building of Bella Now and a few other ones downtown. Tommy Spears. James Tomacek. That's basically the group right now.
But they've been doing a lot of soliciting with the downtown, with the Merrill Commission, trying to get some, them off of Dead Center and doing some things with downtown Merrillville. And we want to make sure the library is part of that. One of the things, first thing he said to us was, well, I know why you're here. And we said, why? And he said, well, you're opposed to the tunnel. Do any of you know about a tunnel? No, okay. That's the same thing that we said, we don't know what you're talking about. He said, well, you're not opposed to the tunnel? We said, we don't even know what the tunnel is. So what his, one of his proposals is to tear down the Daily Times building to then eliminate that parking lot and the road that comes down that you use for a shortcut to bypass the light, the top of the hill, and to close that road and create a parking garage there. And a five-story parking garage plus a five-story condo complex where the Daily Times is. That road is a straight shot across our bridge, across the lake. And you can see from, what is that, Harper? You can see that down that street, you can see the library. So what he is proposing is to put a tunnel, which would be about a two-story tunnel, through the parking garage, through the connection between the parking garage and this condo complex. And that's the tunnel that he's talking about. He felt we would be opposed to that. The way we looked at it as a library group was, you're bringing 200 people across the street from us within 200 yards. How can we possibly be opposed to something like that? And that kicked off the meeting pretty well. So we were pretty positive after that. But the plans for downtown Merrillville are, the church downtown would go away that's in that office building, become a bakery, the steps that would go down to whatever the other street is down there that was an eyesore and a drug hangout would be converted to tables and chairs and part of a restaurant for a brunch cafe and a bakery cafe. And the old armory is being converted to a sports center, sports bar, bowling alley, whatever complex. And so the idea of downtown Merrillville suddenly is widening and widening a lot, which is really, I think, really good for Merrillville. Adding parking areas and just additional things to do in Merrillville and downtown Merrillville. So we were for that. I hope you all get more involved in what's happening and hopefully commission meetings and see what's going on. It was interesting and it's good that we get to go to some of these areas and talk to them. So we still have some other places to hit in these next couple of months, which we will do. So that's pretty much my report. One of the things that before we move on, that I've asked for, we started doing reports from the different sections of the library incoming. And so today, I asked the educational department to, the adult educational department, to come in and talk about the seed catalog. That we had such a tremendous kickoff on the seed catalog. And the lady who actually started that with us was sick today, so Kathleen Christie. I'm sorry, is going to report on the seed catalog.
Okay, all right. Hi. First of all, I'm standing in for Sheila Penikoff. She's not able to be here, but she is the one who's the force behind this. She started it and she's been maintaining it and it is her passion. It has been very popular. She's been interviewed representing the library at least eight times on local TV, the Daily Times, a National Farm Newspaper, the Tennessee Friends of the Library. She's even had a master gardener from Johnson City call and ask for advice on how they could do something the same way at their library. The programs that we have had for this include winter sewing, not cat stitching, but sewing with seeds. We've had a seed swap this year. She has had authors come. She's had quizzes on Facebook. She's had an ugly vegetable contest and people sent in pictures and they voted on which was the worst. We had programs on canning and food preservation and save the date. On August 13th, we're going to have an heirloom tomato tasting celebration. I love tomatoes, so I think that'd be great. What you do in order to borrow seeds, you read this and if you pass that out and you will come and look at these. We have flowers down here and herbs here and vegetables here, and they're in alphabetical order. So then you would take one of these cards and you write down, you take up to five packets of seed per card per month. So if you have a family with six cards in it, you are allowed to take out 30 packets of seeds. We do ask that you return some of the seeds in the fall, and then that way it keeps up the, it keeps up the supply. There are protocols on the website and on this pamphlet to tell you how to save seeds, how to, what we need for the seeds that come back to us. But as of this morning, we, from February 1st, we have lent 1,632 packets of seeds. It's been a great year. People are really getting into this. I like to say that we are literally feeding Black County.
Pull out a couple of packets.
Sorry to your problems. Here are snap seeds. Okay, so you take them and write down, oh, and then you put that in here so she can keep count and know what we have and know what's missing. And she keeps count of what's been used so she knows what's popular. So, and I'm gonna put that back in and alphabetical order. We have, for instance, here's some, how do you say it, amaranth? Yeah, something like that. Love wise bleeding. We have herbs, basil, genovese, basil. It's so local. We have, when we first started, someone said that they had seeds from this man. It went, where are we? Where's the parking lot? Over here, okay. On that hill at the end of the parking lot, there's a man whose name was Taz, and he had planted seeds. What are they? What are they? Pole beans? Some kind of beans that his grandmother had grown. From the 1800s. And someone had gotten some seeds from him over the years. And when we started, she donated a lot of those seeds. So there's been a real community enjoyment of this. So I don't know if there was anything else I was gonna tell you. Is there anything? Did that answer some of your basic questions? And feel free to get some seeds.
How do people get the seeds back to you?
There are instructions on the website and some in the pamphlet that tell you how you harvest your seeds. If they're hybrids, we don't want them because they would not, they would not grow true. But then put them in possibly a Ziploc bag. Identify them, look at the date and give the basic information. If you know the cultivar and the popular name, put that down and give us your name in case we have any questions. And then in addition, the Friends have been very supportive because we always buy a supply of seeds to start with. The Friends and the Master Gardens have been marvelous partners in this. Someone, did you have a question?
Well, I was just gonna reinforce that. Their goal is to feed Black County. And so it's a good collaborative effort.
They volunteered. They're a big, big help. Okay.
Where do you keep the catalogs?
This is in the reference department. I wanted you to see it so when you're walking around, you know where to actually get the seeds. So I told them at the desk, if anyone comes up tonight looking, I'll just have to come. Okay?
We're gonna continue this program. I think it's been fun. I think all of you have enjoyed it too. So we can continue this each month going forward now. Okay, Manny, you're next up. Angela's not here. She's online, okay. We did meet with the foundation and then played over some things with them. See what happens in the future. Manny, you want, sure, have your report.
Just want to say first, today, our facilities team started to mow the landscaping here. Our machines, our lodge mower and the smaller mower have been in the shop being repaired. The large one is back and we have a extensive landscaping here. So they were working on it today. They also have a trimmer, so they should be finishing up tomorrow. So it'll be another all day. They've been taking their time just because the grass is so long and it's still wet. So they've been taking their time with that. I attended my first Tennessee Library Association Conference last week in Knoxville. And actually, some of the librarians here were present as well. And they made one heck of a first impression for me. The first day I was there, I was part of a Level Five Summit. So I got to meet all the Level Five library directors in the state of Tennessee, which was great for me and I think great for them too. They were trying to learn more about where I came from and how Massachusetts libraries handle certain things such as advanced books and that handles it a little differently than what's happening here. But again, what was great about it was I started to make headway and start building relationships with my colleagues, my fellow colleagues, including Andrew Hunt, who's director down at the Cleveland Bradley County Library, where I have to go down there because I don't know where that is. But I also invited him to come up and I'll give him a tour of Flint County Public Library. It was an all-day affair, so it began at nine in the morning, concluded about seven, 7:30. And our keynote speaker, which I didn't mention a list before, that is my third time seeing David. I saw him at a New England Library Association Conference. It was in Stowe, Vermont. This was many, many years ago. And then about five years ago, he's in Worcester, Massachusetts, and he spoke at the Massachusetts Library Association. And this gentleman, he is right now a professor at University of Texas, a different UT. Dynamic presentation. He is so passionate about libraries that he has his own podcast that is updated weekly. And he talks about all the current trends and all the news going on with libraries when it comes to academic libraries, public libraries, school libraries, and also special interest libraries. He was fantastic. And then we got to see him the following day as he was the keynote speaker for the entire conference. So it was in a large auditorium area and got to see award winners and just, some of my colleagues were there too, and we got to just enjoy a fantastic presentation from David. Following that, I was in the exhibit hall, starting to speak with vendors, and then also attended four programs. Mostly, I was more looking at community-based presentations. A lot of it I was doing in Massachusetts that I intend to do here. So it was fantastic. It was a great first impression. Next year it's in Memphis. So I look forward to that and started to make some really good friendships.
I said, I don't know, you may not.
So just talking, I just want to break down regarding my report with youth services. Next month, I'm gonna have Chelsea Towel do a presentation. Be a kickoff for summer reading program. And we're actually having something called Touch a Truck, which, have any of you been to Touch a Truck before? They're fantastic. And they have, you know, street sweepers, police, fire, bucket trucks. I've been there where there was a tank trying to get an airplane, you know, and the kids get to sit in the vehicle. And unfortunately, if one hears the horn, then they all discover the horn. But it's a great, it's a great program and the kids have a lot of fun. They did a smaller one when the Atlanta Braves trophy was across from the courthouse a couple of, about a month or so ago. But that's great. So I'm gonna have Chelsea come next month and just talk about all the wonderful programs. And she is a dynamo when it comes to youth services programs. So we'll have her have her next month. Our adult services update, we did, the adult services did a little something different, which I always enjoy. And these were just sample questions that the reference desk gets. And again, this is just a small sample, but you can see the type of questions and the research that's involved in these questions. So we, adult services changed it up a little, which was great. Has anyone seen the new spring display? So that was Penny Stewart and Josephy. I say Benavides, but I guess it's Benavades? That'd be, there are Portuguese people with Benavides and the same. So I put it regardless, it's a wonderful display. So if you get a chance, if you haven't seen it, please go to the circulation area and you'll see it right dead in the center. Just the thought process that goes into that is incredible. We have a new addition to our update, and that's hospitality services. And that's all for Chelsea Matheny, who's in the back. She does such a wonderful job when it comes to booking and handling all the meeting rooms as well as that bookmark cafe, which is just, it's gold over there, it's a gold mine. And just a few new items that she added to the update. We picked up the Philanthropic Educational Organization Chapter T Women's Club. They are gonna be meeting here once a month. We also will have the Chill Hawi. Chill Hawi, I got it right. I better get that one right, yeah. They're gonna be meeting here every month as well. And none of that would have been done if it wasn't for Chelsea. So we appreciate that. We also had the Job Fair in here, and it was for the U.S. Postal Service. And it was extremely busy, which was great to see. Again, it's ample parking, wonderful facility. We are gonna have a fire drill. So we had risk management come, was it last week, met with the safety team. And we're gonna have a fire drill next Tuesday, and we'll see how that goes. But that'll be happening. Just a brief update on some of the projects. As far as the children's area with the arm donation, we're just waiting for one specific piece of furniture, and that should be complete. ARP should be complete because taxes are done. So that will now be our young adult or teen area. We have some great plans for that. Still working with Chris Soro when it comes to the book drop area as well as Angenee and I had a meeting with Chris about that. But he's also gonna be looking at creating plans for the freight elevator and also the downstairs restrooms. We need that in order for us, including the foundation, to go on fundraising. That's, oh, one more thing. Hot Summer Nights is coming back. It's gonna be Thursdays in August. We have this year, Robin Ellen will be performing, what, folk rock? Folk rock. While Blue Yonder, Celtic music. We're also gonna have Beatles for Sale, which is a Beatles tribute band out of Nashville. And we have a band called Genop, and they are a cover band and they play disco music. So a little something different here at the library. And that's my review of that. If anyone has any questions or.
Any questions? Questions of Manny or?
I have a comment. Three years ago, we really debated whether the cafe was the idea that makes sense. We turned that into, really, what you guys have done to kind of condense the body that is worth, it's a pretty bottom line.
I had my mom in town, Louisiana, she's educator, brought her here yesterday. She was so impressed that she could get coffee and water and walk around the library. So she just thought it would have asked that. Thank you.
I did want to follow up RFID tag. Are you sure? Volunteers or?
Good in the audio section.
Yeah, yeah, we still need volunteers. So yes, I'm sorry. I, you know, we talk about it all the time that it becomes like, good morning, how was your day? Oh, it's going well. That's how RFID is to us. But yes, we still need volunteers. And I don't have the specific number, but Angenee, how many items have been included now?
136,000 plus as of Thursday morning, Thursday morning. So, and it, those include, it's a mixed bag. So mainly books, but there's some, like when I, we're just starting the DVDs, there may be a few audiobooks. We knew the DVDs and the audiobooks would be both pairs.
If you want a thrilling experience, follow on through to the DVDs.
Are all the books done?
Are all the books done?
Not included. Almost all of them, I think, referenced and archived still. Working on archives right now. And we're still working.
It was a great idea to close the library. Thank you all for sticking with that. It never would have happened if the library was not closed that week. I think employees enjoyed it too.
Let's do it every year.
Maybe not.
And thank you all for, those of you that came and volunteered and prayed. Did you want to go over the budget at all? Anybody have any questions on the budget that was included here? Just a couple of things to call out. We're 73% under. We should be at 60.55 or at 73 under. So that's fantastic. The revenues are, again, way up over what was budgeted. So again, congratulations back there. And to the rest of the staff for the renting of the rooms and whatever is going on. But the budget certainly looks great.
Can I refresh my memory on the lawn? Didn't we buy a piece of equipment a year ago?
And it should, it should be working, but it didn't.
Okay, so we bought something there, but then it goes to the county July 1st or what's?
The lawn equipment won't go to the county.
But they'll start taking care of the grounds July 1st or?
Yes, so general services. And I'm gonna have Don Stallion come in June to speak more about how this relationship, because it's brand new. So there's gonna be stumbles along the way, but they'll be handling all the facilities.
And they didn't stay on start till next month, correct?
July 1st. Yeah, started this.
Library staff has to take care of it until July 1st.
So do we sell that equipment or do they use that?
What happens?
That's a discussion that we'll have with Don, yeah.
I wanted to ask, how did the commission presentation go?
Stephanie was there too and a few others, including Angenee and Anna, when I thought it went, I thought it went well. I thought the presentation that Angenee and Anna created, I thought was great. It was clear, it was concise, and it was easy for me to interpret what was on those slides. My reception from, based on my presentation, I thought was very positive. I thought Commissioner Anderson spoke very highly of the library and the budget. And I thought the mayor said some great things and positive, positive things about the future of the library and the relationship. I don't know, Stephanie?
I would agree. I would agree. And was very encouraging as far as this facility and making some improvements like the roof and things like that and supporting that endeavor, fixing the roof especially.
Yeah, you mentioned that.
Yeah.
We felt really good, even, even the rooms. Yes, thank you.
And it was short and concise.
Yeah, right to the point.
Any other questions? Okay, um, we'll move to, did you have anything on the foundation? No.
We met.
All right, Bruce, I will report for the friends.
Yeah, uh, just a few things I want to share with you. At the same meeting, Manny went to the TLA slash, uh, Tennessee, uh, Friends of the Library Diane Rocker Doctor Award. Friends of the Library State. Actually brought it in today. And we're very proud of that. The, uh, we talked last time about needing to expand eBay. We're out of room and Dick and friends. About two days later, we're down there pounding shelving and putting everything together and we now have, I don't know how much, but we've really expanded our eBay footprint down there. A lot of it's, uh, already mapped out. Uh, it's not full yet, but it's, it's getting there and it was, it was really needed. So that is all done and they're, they're getting moved in right now. We did make a milestone with our, our dealings with eBay in the fact that, uh, we went over a hundred thousand dollars for the year with them. And one of the perks is we get an actual real life person to talk to. And, uh, they've already had a number of meetings and they're all excited because we don't get, go to some call center and wait for callback and all that stuff. So that's, that's been exciting. We are working our budget, which will be our, our internal budget for next fiscal year. Also our board nominees. And I'm currently pointing toward, uh, about a June eighth, annual meeting of the friends of the library. We have one every year, the purpose being to share progress, elect the new board and, uh, share budget. That's about all I've got, Andy.
As usual, thank you very much for everything you do. They, they're tremendous with what's going on. Is there any, there, there are no tax restrictions, are there?
No, well, a couple of years ago, Betsy Smith, we had at one time a hundred thousand dollar seal. And we were gonna start getting taxed. I, I think that was back in Denise's reign. But Denise and Betsy, um, took on the task and Betsy now has that raised to three hundred thousand dollars.
That went through the state.
With the state. So we're, we're clear for another few months.
Thank you for that positive insight. It's great. If you haven't been downstairs, take a look downstairs. Thank you for expanding and expanding. It's great.
Well, the really, the reality of the situation is our paradigm is shifting. Online sales is really taking a front row seat. And we're keeping them going.
Okay, right, um, next up is Liz Schrecker.
Oh, uh, so you all have our April reports. Um, we've already talked about core competencies, I think a couple of times. So I didn't bring that hand out again. You'll see our trainings. Uh, we were very pleased. TSLA was pleased to offer the Level Five Summit in conjunction with the TLA, uh, conference this year. Typically, we'll, we'll host the Level Five Summit. Uh, those, those have been held in November. This was our third one. But due to pandemic and people not wanting to meet in person in November, we moved it and we thought, well, we'll just do it in conjunction with TLA. So then people that are coming to TLA can get a Level Five and then come to TLA. So we're glad that all worked out really well. It was a long day, but it was a good day. So I'm glad you enjoyed it. And it's a day where we bring all of our top tier library directors together for networking and, and top tier discussions and training. So we were glad to, Brad Cordelia Anderson, uh, present on marketing, uh, library marketing and communication and, um, and then our David Lake is, of course, was the speaker for the evening for the dinner portion. So we were happy to do that. And we'll do it every year, I hope. So, um, we have our next in-person training, uh, at the office. It will be in-person only is disc assessment training, uh, with Gail's Braggins. That's April the twenty-sixth. Uh, and then of course, um, we have a library draft roundtable, June sixteenth. And we are distributing and I we you to sign the annual library service agreement, um, that is distributed to each one of our library boards. That's one of the three annual documents that we distribute. It's actually the contract, if you will, for the county boards to contract with the state or the libraries to receive regional services. And we do that each year. So that is due June thirtieth, but I'll leave that with you. If you would like to sign it, you can't, there's not been any changes to it. Uh, I know you all have been discussing recruiting new board members. So, and we've talked about core competencies. Really, that's, that's mainly what's going on. We're plugging away. It's just as usual, it's busy, busy time. And you have the statistics for reads, uh, on the back. So we're plugging.
Since Manny's report, this is the state or our region have any kind of protocol for visiting other libraries or other libraries coming to visit us? Is there anything?
No, no.
Throw out and say, hey, we'd love to have you come up or?
Um, well, actually, we have, we just haven't yet. We have typically brought together, because we only have two level five libraries in our region. We have typically brought them maybe to meet each other at the regional office. But no, I, I think it's great for each one of them to go and, and visit and see what's going on in each, each one of those. So I'm glad that you two got to
Yeah.
connect and you got to connect with some other level five libraries too, you know, um, so that everybody can talk about all the different things that come upon their table.
Those pandemic, we move back from state perspective to.
It's varied by community, each community. Um, most of our libraries in our region and, and most across the state, from what I hear from reports are trying to get back to the service level, but of course, not just public libraries. All manner of institutions from churches and other organizations are, are still trying to get people to come back in and get back to that level, you know, that they had before. So that's been a challenge, I think, for more than just our public libraries. It's a topic for discussion engagement, community engagement. We're working very hard.
Okay, thanks, Liz. Okay, in the whole business, we have some committee reports. And do you have, well, I, I didn't ask you, but do you have an update on, on the different committees and what they're meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. So this Thursday, the library, uh, services committee will be meeting at five thirty at the learning lab. And then the PR committee, they will be meeting in Sharon Lawson on May ninth at five thirty. And then finance will be meeting also in Sharon Lawrence on May the twelfth at five thirty. Uh, the marble amplifier committee, we are looking at and will, uh, shoot out dates to that committee. We're looking at late May having a committee meeting.
Okay, any questions on that? Everybody knows what committee you're on. Good. I read the, uh, our bylaws as part of the package. It said I have to go to every one of those meetings. I'm sorry.
And the, in the committee meetings usually run about, I know this Thursday, the commission meeting's at six thirty. So we'll probably go for about an hour. So I'll go to the commission meeting.
What are your, our bylaws? Our, uh, nominating committee will be, voting is in June. We have, do we want to have a committee report on that or?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, Logan?
Yes, uh, so the nominating committee, it consists of myself, Stephanie, Tom, and Jim. We met and, uh, we've, uh, we want to go to the board as candidates for chairman, co-chairman, etc. So we're, we're, um, nominee members. We have the chairman, co-chair, Stephanie Tompkins and secretary Anna. So those are the, the nominated from committees. Now, we've got a vote on this in, in June.
What are your bylaws? We vote in June.
So in June, then we will, uh, bring these particular nominees to the floor and then open it up for additional nomination.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Any, anything on the amplifier at all? Nothing? No.
No.
Okay.
Is part of the nominations, is that just slated officers or is that? We already report, right? We need to fill a few positions or are we?
Say that again.
We're trustees, are we?
What? And we have open for new trustee to
Oh, you've standing.
For nominations. And we still have two months.
So are you, um?
That, we have, we have a slate so far and I'll bring that to you next month. I keep hoping somebody changes their mind and we.
What, what is, are you of Mont County State?
Yes. Yeah, I, I, Suzette is not here, but I talked to her a couple of times this week and last week and, there was a total misunderstanding from Merivale, uh, that and with her and what was presented to her that she thought she was on for a one year, one, one term for the regionals. And that then she would be finished. And so she, she felt that since she was being finished anyway, she didn't really need to come. And didn't understand that she was appointed for a three-year term with us and that our regional is part of our, part of our trustee board from, right from the get-go. And that's the way our bylaws say it also. So, so, uh, she was both, she will roll off of the regional, but she stays on with us. And now she, I, I hope she, in our discussion yesterday, she understood that some, uh, again, so I, we'll, we'll hope that. And Susan said that she locked herself out of her office and couldn't get back in today. So she couldn't get, she was thought she was gonna be late.
Yeah, she said she just wanted to let me know she'd be late.
And Suzette is the, uh, assistant to the, to the president of Merivale College. And so who knows where their security is?
And the regional board ends, that's meant like this July. So there is no more regional board.
So then she had two appointments. She had one for the one year remaining on the regional board and then she had a three-year, two-year as Merivale. Okay. So then her in twenty twenty, she's on here until twenty twenty-four.
That's correct.
Is that right? Okay. She's getting.
Was she? Was she a? Was she regional? She was regional. She can be regional and local?
I was.
You were, you rolled off, she took your place.
I, when I was original, I was also local and Stephanie is too. But I guess the way it was explained to her was just regional.
Right.
That's somehow where the confusion.
It may be something I know for war or education.
Well, regions goes away, so it's not the issue.
Yeah.
So she thought she was done. And so.
So, so in reality, moving forward, we have one opening.
We have one open, correct. Maybe. We're gonna shame him in.
They're, they're short now. They're not long anymore.
Won't you wait and tell me?
They're not till eight thirty.
Okay, um, the other old business that anything that you see or you want to bring up. Old business, new business. We have two thi- two things, amendment of the bylaws and, uh, library hours. Which do you want to tackle first?
Bylaws. Easier.
Okay. Anybody want to talk about the bylaws? Has every, everybody read through the bylaws? And do you see anything that you might want to change or look at or amend?
It appears that the allocation funding is based on city population. Merivale, Alcoa, et cetera. But in reality, is that made fun of?
It's funny you ask that, because Danny, that yesterday, the same thing. And I wondered with the new census, if they are taking a look at that.
Um, so what is it be prior to that? Not so much. Now with, I think that's an initiative that probably started, I want to say it started in two thousand nineteen, that, um, the funders wanted to have a closer representation of the library cardholders usage. And so, um, our patron services started, um, making sure that every library card would have a, a GIS check so that we could verify where they were living. And that did come into play in this year's, uh, budget presentation. The county did ask for us to provide the makeup of active cardholders and provide those, um, stats to, or within the budget presentation. So that percentage is, um, moving in that direction. And as of July one, it's, I think it's sixty, thirty, ten.
Yes.
Sixty county, thirty Merivale, ten Alcoa. And so what's?
Louisville, Louisville's county.
At this stage, yes ma'am.
So what's the funding percent?
We're gonna be talking about going forward. So one of the things that I noticed down there and I, I didn't know was in the bylaws was the number of by sex we could have on board. I didn't realize that. And so we cannot have more than, what, five, six, six of, of one sex. Or actually, I think it's a female, right? Same sex. I'm gonna take a second just to look through my notes.
So, so, so if we look at the breakout. Does, does the funding population of nations break down? And for us, it's nine women. So if you look at the six, three. So if you look at the six three. At the record, we six three, we had ten members, six county, three city. One out.
We only have nine board.
I know, I'm just. I'm just trying to make the math easier. The math would be easier if you had ten. Sixty, thirty, and ten. So that would be seven, but it's actually six, three, and one. That's one Alcoa, how many more?
Two.
Two, bro. So that's reflected on the.
So it would be interesting to see based on population, the way it's written, if. It balances out that way. Do you know, has, has, I thought Mont County has decreased in population or Merivale and Alcoa has increased?
Narrowly Alcoa's increased. I don't know about Mont County. Overall, the county population has decreased. I don't know.
I think we've increased quite a bit in the county because when they had to do the redistricting of the commission. And I lost part of, I lost two large subdivisions in my commission district. Because other places in my district had increased in population. So I think even the county has increased.
We'll work on that.
We can remove the regional language.
Yes.
That's what the second.
amended on.
So the first copy is the original, the second is the amended.
Yeah, any other changes or anything that you see in here?
And there's more changes.
Okay, is there a second to accept these? Thanks, all in favor? Any opposed? Can we roll search for revision? All right. Twenty after, oh, limit this to an hour. Discussion of the library hours. If you, there was several documents in the pack at this time. Took me a few minutes to understand what that packet, what they. This was all about. This is the listing of the employees and their telephone extensions. But it also gave you a listing by category of the number of employees that we had. Three years ago, two years ago, one year ago and today by category. So it actually told you which, what categories are affected by the amount of employees that we've lost. And so we went from actually. Fifty-two. Employees, total employees to thirty-eight. And that thirty-eight is inflated, but maintenance people, so we would lose what, four?
Nine.
Five, okay, five more out of thirty-eight, so we dropped down to thirty-three. So we now have thirty-three employees running our library. So based on that. Here's the, the response that hardly, the schedule that Danny and Angenee put out to the, to the employees. And how they felt hours, the hours were listed at nine to nine, Monday through. I'm sorry, Monday through Friday. And then Monday through Saturday, or on Saturday, nine to six thirty. Thirty-one percent of the response that. Before that. Nine to nine, Monday through Friday, or I'm sorry, Friday. Yeah, Monday through Thursday. Nine to nine. Nine to five thirty, Friday and Saturday, Sunday, well, three to five thirty. Thirty-six percent were in favor of that. And then Monday through Saturday, nine to seven, Sunday, nine. Nine to six thirty, thirty-one percent were in favor of that, so there are other hours out there, so.
Could I just say something?
Yeah, and I want everybody to say.
Sure, yeah, I'll be brief about this. So the hours that Andy just brought up, that was posted with the patron survey that, that came out. The, the final page and the reason why we're discussing this today and. Speaking with other directors of level five and I specifically asked about, are you back to your normal library hours of operation? Yes, they are. I also think it's time for us, Mont County Public Library, to revert back to our library hours as well, which is sixty-nine and a half. I'm proposing that this would begin July the first to start a fiscal year twenty-three. There are two other options that are available and I do thank Anna for creating. The six, nine and a half hour suggestions as well as printing out the staff. Us trustees are the ones who, the governing body and are the ones who vote for these hours. I can give recommendations and, but you vote and discuss. My recommendation would be for the time being, as Andy stated, we're going to be down to thirty-three staff. And no maintenance, no maintenance at all is for now to not open on Sundays. However. Cause I do think we should be open on Sundays, but not with thirty-three staff, not at all. Once we bump up to, thinking forty, forty-one staff. We can open up on Sundays again, because we can actually make it work. We're still gonna have hurdles. Facilities aren't gonna be around on, on the weekends now, so.
Why is that?
It's only on an emergency basis and that's through Don, that's general services.
County, county doesn't work on weekends.
Exactly.
And maintenance.
But if there was an emergency, that wouldn't be.
If someone does, yeah, if there was an emergency, but as far as cleaning, just breaking down, cleaning the restrooms and stuff, they won't be here.
Why can't their schedule be different?
Yeah.
Instead of working Monday through Friday, why can't our library employees, former library employees not work Tuesday through Saturday?
County maintenance that works on weekends and special events.
For special.
And weekends.
Don has told us that as far as like cleaning the restrooms and library, they won't be doing that unless there's an emergency. Especially on Sundays.
So was the proposal for the other staff to clean their restrooms?
No, I'm not proposing staff to.
No, I'm, what was his, what was his solution?
He just said Sundays would be, Sundays would be difficult. Saturdays, I know they do have someone on call at the, at the jail, at the, at the prison. But, yeah.
So Saturdays, they would be.
So the restroom doesn't even get cleaned on a Saturday.
I, I think that, that. We talked about this yesterday, I, I think that's a bad thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't see us going away from cleaning our restrooms or having somebody available. Even if we have to hire a part-time person as a library.
That defeats the purpose of why we went with them at the beginning.
Don and, now Don is gonna meet with Angenee and myself next week and we're gonna work on a memorandum of understanding and. I would like to see, and I know Angenee would as well, to have someone handle the restroom, especially on Saturday.
Well, I think if you're doing that, you should also think about Sunday, since we're eventually the end goal.
Yeah.
Cause if you sign a contract right now and all of a sudden you're, you're stuck with that, then we're gonna have to offset that employee, so.
Yeah, I think if we, I think, like I said, there's gonna be some hurdles to jump. And I think we're gonna learn on, on the fly when it comes to all this. But an issue like you brought up will have to be addressed. So I think there's still, there's still a lot going on. That being said, just adding that to the. To the suggestions, but again.
Does anybody know, are there any, any buildings in the county or Merivale City that are open on Saturdays and Sundays? Other than the library? What?
Well, you have ballgames going on all the time. So we had, we always had custodial staff there on Saturdays for ballgames or late at night or whatever, where you just adjusted their schedule. They didn't, they didn't work Monday through Friday, they may work Tuesday through Saturday or they may come in late.
I just can't see if somebody throws up in the bathroom.
Well, what about moving, moving tables?
Well, they would come up for an emergency. Oh, oh, definitely, that's an emergency, yeah.
But not clean the bathroom on Saturday and Sunday, if you're open Saturday and Sundays, that.
It's a long.
That's a lot of time.
Again, we're gonna speak with, we're gonna speak with Don about that next week. I just wanted to just throw that out there.
Yeah, and it's good to know, so we appreciate your transparency with.
What are their schedules now? Our custodial night slash.
We have Monday through Saturday right now, yeah.
And prior to COVID, Monday, Thursday, the custodial votes.
Was it, okay.
I mean, I would propose to them and the M O U that they keep their staying. We've had county votes, work weekend events with us, our votes, that a portion of it's, you know. County budget on the weekends, our visitor centers, so.
And I agree with that and again, we're gonna sit with Don and, cause that's obviously something that needs to be addressed, you can't have.
Yeah, yeah.
Washrooms not cleaned.
Well, I guess the population. I think clearly seems to want some Sunday hours according to this survey. And I think it's a nice idea to be closed Sunday. But what do the taxpayers want?
Guys, I hate to do this to you, my son has a concert that I need to make sure that I can make it to, so I apologize. Before, before I leave though. I do agree about having service on Sundays, I do understand when you have the, the issues with personnel. And I don't know if they could be a happy medium of potentially to start off if the staff would consider opening maybe the first Sunday of the month. Just as a middle ground to, to gauge the potential, you know, how much does the population? How many, you know, is it really gonna be used on Sunday? So I don't know, but I'll definitely go with the majority. All right, sorry guys.
And the government needs to, I think, know that that's what the people want and provide the resources.
So, so you mentioned earlier, if you move from the thirty-three to forty-one.
Yeah.
Sunday opening.
We'd have more bodies and we can schedule that, yes.
But, but, but again, how could S D L leave a custodial issue?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So the custodial issue doesn't go away if you open on Sunday.
Yeah.
Or more, more bodies that.
More bodies helps with the schedule, yeah.
People running the library but not necessarily the king.
Right, we'd have services provided on weekends because we'd have enough people, yeah.
Um, how do you plan on getting to forty-one people? Is that going to commission with the budget increase?
So I, it's not gonna come up in F Y twenty-three, but I did at the finance meeting say that. I will go back in a year from now for the F Y twenty-four budget and ask for additional employees for the library. And I'll have enough statistics and data saying, yeah, you know, our circulation and our hours are increased. And try to justify why we need more people.
In our meetings with the funding bodies, we brought up with each of the mayors and the operations people that we would be asking for more money. With no question. Going forward.
Well, Merivale City did step up this last time, I know the county and Alcoa both did, they came forth with funding last time.
Our contract ends next year.
Yeah.
We have one more year, then that's it, and then we can ask for more money. And we've, we've made it perfectly clear to them that we're asking for more money. Whether we get it or not, that's, that's another thing, but.
I would, I would assume planning with the same budget for next year. And so if we want to achieve Sunday eventually. Do we look at cutting other areas, adding personnel? Is that more important, hours and servant? Programming? And having more people to help your staff?
It would, we'd also lose, or it's, it's so tricky because you're gonna lose something.
I just went mad on, I mean, that's, I just went mad on getting future funding.
Does closing Sunday send a message to them that? If we don't have the funding, we can't open on Sundays, I'm just throwing this out as a question. And the public wants that. And just, do then they complain to them that, well, we want Sunday hours, you need to get the library more funding.
So the question is, there, there's a number, more than thirty-three to forty-one, that's two hundred to X. And then the other piece, this is for Sunday, so the other piece is, how do then. The custo. How's this custodial piece, the product, the importance and the other piece, because of.
Yeah.
I mean, you got, you have established a particular level of. Performance, the clean, whatever, and you start not being able to maintain the restrooms.
It's, it's a, like I said, we're gonna talk to Don, I know it's so, there are so many moving parts in this. And I mean, it's unfortunate that we're down that amount of staff and it is what it is and.
Under the, the discussion with the county maintenance, can you have your own employee here? The library employee doing maintenance work?
I don't, I don't have an answer, I, I would have to speak to Don about that, I mean, they're taking over facilities. And for us to have a quarter or a custodian.
They can't work seven days and didn't we have that before? Like.
No, we had our own employees before.
Right, that's what I mean, we had our own employees before.
And, and a while ago, we didn't against it, was there ever a time when?
I think we need to do what's best for the library and if it means having one employee that stays here.
And so if they can't work seven days, they can't work sixty-nine and a half hours.
They can work Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, it has to be two part-time.
Yeah. Although I don't know how easily you can fill jobs right now, much less two part-times.
I think another, just to throw that, if we did, we did that, how are we gonna get that, that money?
Don't give it to them, don't pay for that, that position. In the schools, I keep saying schools because that's what I'm familiar with, we contracted with companies to do.
Yeah.
Major part of our cleaning and that, but we also had individual custodians that we hired and kept in the schools. Because of that flexibility and had, needing somebody to come to a ballgame and empty trash cans and clean toilets and stuff like that, so. We had both, contract with somebody, but you also have your own employees that, at least one person in each school. Who can clean up through it because the custodial or the cleaning crews would come in and eat and so you had to have somebody there during the day.
So you're saying like, like Mr. Smith's cleaning service, we would hire our, to go out to bid and.
Go through like the chairman.
The county, use the county for that, I mean, that's, that's kind of the same correlation work, we're contracting with the county to do that.
You're saying not hire the employee as an employee with our library just to hire a state contractor.
Yeah. Okay.
And then that's a discussion with Don, yeah, having, yeah, and it doesn't.
Well, it's your employee, I mean.
I, I don't know if it, well, I, see, that's where it gets slippery, because if it's our employee, but. It's getting paid, they're getting paid not by the library, by the county.
If we use the county, do we get charged a fee for that? Yeah, okay, so if we use the county, we get some free or included, it's not, it's contracted services in on the budget, didn't you say?
Yeah, we don't understand that. We don't understand that. That all that, that all that money um, allocated for custodial staff go to another line item?
That's, that's correct.
And that money is going to the county. So the money that we would be paying our own employees is actually going to the county.
Correct.
And you're being charged as a department.
Yeah. It was the easiest way, yeah.
Yes.
We are paying for it.
But we're getting less benefit now, because now we are saying. So I don't know, I mean, is the, this month is the maintenance thing part of the conversation of the hours? I mean, is that, can we table that and that be a separate conversation with Don? And let's just talk about Monday through Sunday.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's.
Except I, I think that that is part of the hours, if you don't have anybody here to maintain the your restroom facilities or the rest of the building.
We may have.
Or on a Saturday. You've got to, you just have to have somebody here.
Right, but.
I mean, I don't, you can't ask her employees.
I, I wouldn't, now you know, I wouldn't do that.
I mean, I'd clean them myself before I would ask an employee.
So we can't be open Sundays if we don't have service?
I'm thinking Saturday. I mean, you probably have more, as many people here on a Saturday as you do on a Tuesday.
But didn't you say they provide Saturdays?
Yeah. But, but we've not, we've not signed any agreement with them. So I think we have, I think you, as our representative
Yeah.
Has to be sure that the agreement includes
Correct.
time on Saturday and whenever else we need it, evenings.
That's when we're meeting with Don next week, and that's gonna be in there, exactly, so.
And he needs to give to him what hours we're presenting.
Okay, thoughts on hours?
So if you only have thirty-three employees now, how, how do you plan on opening six to sixty-nine and a half by July? Are you all gonna hire? Extra people or?
We will have an additional part-timer coming on, so we'll be up to thirty-four.
We need to look at the budget. I just don't see how it's possible, I, I mean, I probably want to be open. But you guys are saying your staff, there's not people.
Right, yeah.
So why can't we assess pulling money or from somewhere else?
I don't know. Again, I don't know Tennessee law here, but I think, cause you voted on the budget, I don't think you can now.
Oh, yeah.
We can amend it. Yeah.
Okay.
It just has to go back through the.
Uh, just for historical reference, I was, I wondered out of curiosity myself, so I went back to the data collection of the public library survey that you'll do every year, just to see, how, how long have we been operating? How long have we been operating at sixty-nine and a half? And the, I, the electronic, the online form started in two thousand and six, so I can only go back that far. I could, I have paper copies other places, but I didn't have time to go through that. But it shows at some point, um, in two thousand and eight, it still had sixty-nine and a half, it said seventy hours, but I suspected the system probably automatically updated. Um, and you had thirty-eight FTEs at that point. Just for historical.
So two thousand and?
That was two thousand and eight.
Is that thirty-eight FTEs including maintenance?
I think it was.
I probably did, but, yeah.
I can't speak of two thousand and eight.
Also, though, I don't know what, I mean, you probably were not offering the kinds of services that you are now in the programs that you are now. So that's
We didn't have, we didn't have, we may have one.
There was a gentleman who, like, five years ago.
Public library services were helping me out.
Right.
And so we have five full-time maintenance workers?
We have four plus one full-time IT person, so that goes.
Okay, yeah. IT stuff, that's, that's county. So is that thirty-eight, well, and two thousand and eight operating at sixty-nine and a half?
But in all honesty, that probably wasn't ideal.
Nice, yeah, it's fine.
I don't know, I wasn't hearing them.
Now, when you're saying full-time equivalents, that's not the same complete employees we actually have.
No, it's thirty-eight FTE.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah.
So that's forty-hour basis, so that could be twenty part-time employees.
Well, not the way they.
At that point, we had more part-time than full-time in two thousand and eight.
Right.
Okay, any feelings on, on the hours?
Now, I don't think we can be open Sundays.
I, I don't think, I don't think it's wise to try and go for anything permanent, I think I, if I want to vote on something, be to then vote on it again here from now, or some other later time when something like staffing has a chance to be addressed. Um, I, I, I agree on principle that I think the library should be open seven days a week on principle, and ideally, but the staffing doesn't like, that needs to be looked at very closely, and I think, so it doesn't seem feasible right now to try and have that Sunday day. But I don't wanna commit to having the Sunday day off, because I would like to readdress the issue later.
And I, I totally agree with you, I came from a library that was open seven days a week.
I think it's a public service.
We had enough bodies to, to do it, and not opening on Sundays right now, that, that would bother me, but I totally understand how we don't have enough physical bodies, but with that opportunity to, to be, again, open on Sundays, yeah, oh, I, I agree, I.
I think I, I think I kinda like some sort of, maybe some sort of a memo or something that says, we need to readdress this once FTEs get to a certain point, or something like that, it automatically comes back up again. Um, I, I think that would be nice to have.
If you, is it more work to open on a Sunday, even if it's for four hours? And cut back earlier nights, it's just more work, cause it's?
It's so hard to create a schedule with sixty-nine and a half hours, no matter how you cut it, I mean, we've been trying to wrap our heads around, how do we do it? Do we open at eight in the morning, or do we open at, it's it's not gonna be easy, no.
No matter what.
So.
But does opening four hours, does that really create just a a whole nother issue of getting people to come in for four hours on Sunday?
You actually do counts off of the, off of the bar machine in the front? I guess, how many people come in every hour? Release after five?
We just have someone, someone would have to go to the door count at five o'clock.
And again at six, and again at seven, and just see how many people.
Yeah.
And subtract, can we do that?
Yeah, you just have to make sure someone reads it, yeah.
Cause the, the door counts, that, basically, they cut it in half over Sunday. It, when I look at it, it's, um, sad Sundays that were, but it's, it cuts to about fifty percent of Sundays.
I was just wondering for.
And so, yeah, what hours?
How many people actually come into the library from five to nine? You know, I have no idea. We have a total count by do, by day, right?
I guess what I have a hard to know in those Sundays, on Friday, like, one of the options, option at five P M, and then at four-thirty, so no working individual can come to the library until Monday, take your kids. You can't get off work at five, take your kids, you're, it'd be close Friday and Saturday. If you worked in restaurants or et cetera. So I guess that's, I, I see there's a gap in the options of, of the timing, and then, you know, I express my concern about they weren't given the option of a Sunday to go along with that.
Well, just to rebut that, again, just quickly, when I interviewed the entire staff, the majority, again, preferred not on Sundays, and in my mind, I'm saying, yeah, we should be open on Sundays, but reality kicked in when you have X amount of people right now, but I, I.
But the mission of the library is for the community, so when the community said they want Sundays, and so maybe that's culture shifts, changes with, you know, with what the mission is that you work here for.
And the community wants full services on Sundays, correct?
Well, I don't know, this, this survey response just said, I mean, what I looked at was the hours.
Yeah.
And I don't think the question asked.
I'm just thinking on Sundays, that, and they wouldn't get it, but you know, we wouldn't have a storytime or anything like that, or specific services, because we'd be skeleton group, crew, so you may have I don't know, you, it's a, it, there's not an easy solution, no matter what, it's.
We offer the same things on Saturday that we do on Tuesday.
As far as like a storytime or?
Anything. I mean, we don't have storytimes on all day on Tuesdays, for instance, we, we do.
But we do, no, I was just nodding yes to Lauren about storytimes on the, on the weekend.
Yeah.
But you do have good hours weekends.
On, on Saturdays.
I don't think, I would be very surprised if we get a large increase on Monday. I just would be, and so it's like, I think we need a plan for the future. And I think, without, without relying on that, and it's, so it's, it's a budget thing, I think, for us. I think that we need to look at other areas that make reasonable.
Even though you're, we're looking at two years from now.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, whenever, I feel like that's the answer that I got back, whenever I met with an official, said, what do you think about Sundays? They said, you guys need to make it work with the budget that it is now.
I would be very disappointed with our funding bodies if two years from now we go, or a year and a half from now, we go to them and ask for more money, and they say, no, you can't have it.
But what is?
Even if they gave you more, it's probably not gonna be more than two or three percent.
What is the forty, what is the money of forty-one weeks? What, how much is forty-one full-time, say, average? I mean, you know, how much more, plus on top of building and everything else, you're looking at a large increase from the budget.
So if, if what you're saying, if, if we revisit the budget, say the book budget, that would get hit, so we could hire more staff for
I'll just ask.
A basis would be, it, it's, it's, yeah, it's.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at, um, two thousand and nineteen stats, county issue stats, and it was just part of that sustainability plan. And I disagreed with Casey from the very beginning, um, and she disrespected our part-time people and wanted to go all full-time, and we know, all know that full-time people are more expensive because you have to pay benefits and all that other stuff. Hate to say this, but I think we're just gonna have to, you know, when positions come open, we're gonna have to look at if it's a full-time, it may be two-part-time.
Yeah.
Budget is the reality.
I think budgets, where we have to look, is we're say it's ten positions times forty thousand plus benefits, plus their retirement in X amount of years. Plus building stuff, et cetera, I just don't.
I don't see how patron services is doing their job anymore, the number of people that you all have really lost, because in two thousand and nineteen, there were five full-time and fourteen part-time. And now there are eight full-time and four part-time, so that's, that's a huge body count on this list. So I, I commend you all for doing what you're doing, cause I don't see how.
And I think that route that you're mentioning is the route we're gonna have to go.
Yeah.
Because this is something that, when I saw it, I put a had a little cramp in my stomach. So I think when there's a full-time position open, turning into two part-times, well.
And hopefully we can find the higher, some that wanna do part-time, that are still good workers, part of the challenge is part-times call in sick, they quit, more so than a full-time.
My background in, in retail, it was easier to hire for the weekends.
Yeah.
During the week.
Yeah.
And so, hire, we have, we have employees that only work Sundays.
Yeah.
And that was it.
Do you think some teachers would be interested in part-time work on the weekends?
Teacher or teacher assistants or? Yeah, cause some of them, most of the teacher assistants in our system work as part-time. So they would probably, you know, be interested, or retired people. That would be a great bankrupt there, retired teachers. Which we had some. Which we had some, and we lost them.
And perhaps moms, the kids are in school, they just wanna work four or five hours, so that's the strategy then, I guess, to try to hire more part-time and a few less full-time.
And one of my goals since I've started here is, is to reach out further into, into the community and reach other communities that really haven't been, I think, need to be really, uh, touched and recognized, like since I've been here, I've uh, Rotary and Kiwanis have wanted me to become a member, but I'm going with, uh, Central Hispano. A different, which they work with Blount County as well, not only Knoxville. But I think that we need to tap into various communities out there and reach out and say how wonderful the library is, so then you have those opportunities where you're reaching out to another community, um, to come work at the library, and I think that helps the library. I think that would help it would, it would help in general, I think that's where I wanna go, I think it brings you know, library is for everybody, everyone's welcome. That's where I wanna go with it, I think doing that will help, reaching out, that maybe they didn't know there's employment and opportunities at the library, sure is, and they're looking for work, and they're good workers, hard workers, yeah.
So are we feeling as a group that we cannot afford to be open on Sunday right now? So, is that the feeling?
I'll defer to their judgment, and it doesn't sound like they feel very comfortable and confident right now.
But still, we have to say yes.
Right, but we're not the, the ones here running it, so if their suggestion is not to open on Sundays now.
My recommendation right now, however, like what Tim said, we need to revisit it, so once we have bodies, say we have it by well, I mean, that'd be great, be doing backflips here, but we have enough bodies, then we can revisit, like.
School goes back in August and the summertime, like.
Yeah.
It looked a little slower, yeah. So.
I think we can move this to next month, we still have.
Still the same number of hours.
But I still wanna get down to what we think hours are concerned, so if we say, okay, no on Sunday for right now, until we know our main employees we actually have can, can operate with, and what our maintenance schedule looks like too, then how do, how do our Friday nights and Saturday nights look? Based on the, on this schedule, where we would be closed part of Friday night, Saturday?
On option one, versus option two?
So what, you know, what's your feelings on those?
I wouldn't think people would come to the library much on Friday or Saturday nights. Would be my guess.
You've never been open once, say that again.
Three years?
Yes, um, yeah.
Uh, what'd you say?
We were always, our schedules before were Monday through Thursday, nine to nine. And then Friday and Saturday, nine till five-thirty, and then Sundays, what we were open, one to five.
And then Friday and Saturday, nine till five thirty, and then Sundays when we were open, one to five thirty. So we were, have never been open Friday and Saturday nights late.
Yeah.
Liz, what do other level, it's hard to compare with programming and buildings and stuff, but what are the other level five libraries staff at?
I mean, I don't, I can run reports on that, I, I think Cleveland has thirty eight, four, I'm set forty something.
It was forty and they're open seventy hours?
They're open seventy hours, and it's, yeah, around about forty something. But I mean, they struggle too, you know, it's a, it's a, it's, and. There's so many different factors, their facility is. Sort of between, there's like a connector, a main facility between two older homes.
Yeah.
So they, and they're multi-level, so you have to have eyes on each, you know, and you all are really laid out too, and you need to have eyes. You know, and have people spaced out and all kinds of different, so it's, it's hard to compare exactly what, you know. Um, the library is funded like they need to be. Um, I don't, I don't know if they're open on Sunday. Yeah. See.
Are they back to, I'm just curious.
Every, yeah, most everybody in our region, they're all like.
So we say July first, but July fourth's a holiday, I don't know what day of the week that is, but. Fourth is a Monday?
It looks like they're nine to nine Monday through Thursday, and on Friday, nine to six, Saturday, nine to six, Sunday, one to five.
Okay, any more discussion? Just prepared with, we're hiring, um.
Yeah, right, the average happens, right?
Or a plan to be open on Sundays come September one.
But to be fair, you haven't been open on Sundays for a long time, anyway, for two, what, two years probably?
And we wouldn't wanna position it as if you're losing anything, what you're doing is you're gaining. And if the hours are changing, then they're, they're changing to adjust to things like. You know, it is a huge. Difference between, even when it was the fifty-two, you take away the, the five. You know, individuals that are gonna be moving to the county, and that's forty-seven. And, um, what is it, I know that when I started, the ratio was twenty-eight full-time to twenty-two, and it would fluctuate, you know, give or take. You know, we, we've got something in plan, i- in mind. I would like to call out that in this, if you look at the percentages, look at how close they are.
Close, yeah.
And then also look at the actual count. Because I have to admit, the first time I looked at these, if I just looked at face value, I was like, yeah, people definitely want. Um, our, our original hours, if you will. But actually, if you look at how close this is, and this is even of the twenty, I think we had twenty-eight hundred. Only twenty-three hundred, so another five hundred, didn't even think it was worth weighing in what our hours should be. So what that tells me, if we look at the percentages of the twenty-eight hundred. Is that the, the community wants us open for sixty-nine and a half hours, and they don't really care what those hours are. Because what you give up on a Sunday, you have greater access in the morning or in the evening. And what we couldn't, the populations that we couldn't reach when we were open on a Sunday. We now might be able to reach on an early morning or a, like, it's. It's a give or take, and it's an ebb and flow, and I like what Tim said about how, you know what? We're coming out of this, we don't know what it looks like, and we certainly don't know what it looks like with the people that we've got. So let's move slowly, let's not come from a place of lack and say, we're offering this to you, and we're in a new way of doing it. And these are kinds of the ways that we're doing, we're gonna need you to talk to us. So here's our director's email, here is our board's email. Write them and tell them what they, what it matters, and we reevaluate in a six-month and a year, and maybe we tie in a community forum. We have a real opportunity to make this more about community engagement, instead of us trying to fix, because Manny's right. There's not an easy way moving forward, period.
So we take all that and put in some type of, that mutation, because we gotta, we gotta tip some people off, we know that. And, and we have to give them a reason to be rest of our country, we're trying to make, uh, do, trying to support their needs in different. And this is how we do it, and this is because we, you know, how, you know, maybe it's, it's a financial. Maybe we had all the money in the world, and we would have a discussion.
And, and one of the interesting things and concerns about if we go back and hit the operation. When we hit the ever, evergreen, our operation's got a big hit. I've come to find out that the Marable High School, their graphics department, their teacher uses our Lynda dot com. It could be easy to look at that and go, Lynda dot com costs fifteen thousand dollars, yank it, that's a part-time person. But then we've just affected the graphic design course at our local school. So that's, it, you know, we don't know all the elements that we touch. And so, you know, I think it's, I think it's okay for us to move slowly and go. This is what we know we can do for now, and we're gonna look at it, and we're gonna listen to you, and we're gonna revisit every year. And we slowly move back, because. Covid is Covid, and sixty-nine and a half hours is still sixty-nine and a half hours. And when we can figure out maintenance, all this, we can move towards it.
Put a schedule up to paper, any, any drafts in your mind, you know?
Like.
Moving people around where they do, we do, but whatever the schedule is, you know?
I think that we've have doodled, and then we think we have the answer, and then we look like, like, oh, no, we don't, and then.
Okay, this can be done. What can be done? Staff that we, because that's what we've got.
One of the things to.
And a wonderful staff, but they, they're not superhuman, they can't. You know, sometimes they are.
Programming that.
They only have so many hours.
If you add pro, programming back to the library, like we had the best. Then can, can this staff handle that?
I think the honest answer is, we don't know. We're not probably, I mean, we saw, we saw a four hundred percent increase, and that was such a huge. Jump that people didn't even believe that it was true. You know, but that's, that's what happened, and that's what the focus is right now, our focus will be on. Looking at what our internal processes are, seeing where we can streamline, so that we can make it to where there. The next opportunity of a full-time position opens up. If we're, how we're feeling, filling it, what that means in terms of, um, internal processes, but. Gotta look at what internal process is, gotta identify them, see where we can give what.
It, it, yeah, it's.
Well, you have to do sixty-nine and a half hours, let's give it, you have to. You have to have more staff, so you're gonna have to cut out some light items that it's been, to cover. Exactly, to cover.
And to accelerate the check-in system, the book drop area.
That's all in the budget.
That.
Yeah, that, that is, so. And the book drop, once we, like, once we get the book return space, so that we can add that, then we can see greater.
With the big room for some sort of budget analysis, I'll just, we'll, we'll spend, spend a deep amount of time, see if there's any, anything we can trim out. As far as, but you know, low impact.
So here's the thing, we can go in and we can do anything you guys want us to. It's getting it back, the count, the county commission, it's, it's. Um, rule of thumb that when you start pulling from your personnel, or sorry, pulling from your operation, because your personnel's not where. That you're not managing your money well, and so it's perception. And so you, it's not an open checkbook between the two, that's why county commission has to approve when you're moving. And they even have it so that it's between cost centers, now, we have consolidated, so we have one cost center. But personnel and operations are separate, once we move funds into, so. The year I was, that my position was created. That was when county commission approved for that amount of money to be moved into. Uh, from operations into personnel. You can't, it can't be like in two years, we're like, okay, we wanna reduce that and put it back, so just realize. That if we take, if we take books and we whack out forty thousand, which could range between. A forty thousand dollar chunk could be one full-time person. Or it could be four part-time people, maybe. Um, but you know. Consistency has a lot to do with our customer service delivery. And if you've got someone who's working one day a week for four hours, are they gonna know the system well enough? To deliver the type of customer service? Is Cynthia's position going to move from being able to address customer service issues? To I'm full-time hiring, training, letting go, hiring, training, letting go?
We just said the solution was to add more part-time people, that's kind of.
Well, that's, it's, there isn't an easy, like, if a position comes up.
We could split, cut it in half, there you go, there's an extra person.
But it'll also depend, you know, Manny will talk with the, the managers and see, okay, is it essential that this stay a full-time?
Yeah.
Do we go to part-time, you know?
And there are points in my career where I didn't work full-time, but I had a professional job, so there are people out there that. Are professionals that don't wanna work in the hours a week, they're thirty, so they might be hard to find, but.
Well, I'll just summarize this, this. This is a pickle, this, when I started here, I was like, my goodness, this is gonna be a big one. Um, I compare it to when you get married, and you don't get to pick your in-laws, you inherit in-laws. This is, uh, this is my Aunt Kathy, my wife, my wife's son, and I'm like, goodness. There is not an easy solution, and like Logan said, we're gonna, someone's not gonna be happy. Even if it's not the community, it could be a staff, or, you know, or we're gonna, you know. Twenty thousand dollar library books or something, and then. How do you get that back? And I will tell you, I learned that lesson the hard way when I was a very young director of Eastbridge, Florida. I said, I'm gonna do that, because I know we'll get that back eventually, again.
Okay, I said. Close again on that, so I'm gonna cut this off, if you don't mind, and bring it back up next month. And that'll give us two, still two more months to argue about this, we're talking about it. And maybe we'll have some more, more information out of numbers of people.
We have a new budget July one, right? And so it sounds like it's kind of new, look at that.
Our budget is, is constant for next year.
Right, but. But that's when all this is starting, like, so if we need to kind of move.
So, I'm sorry, I wasn't.
She was asked about moving money for FY twenty-three, which July first, correct?
I guess the main thing is, again, it's, I mean, you guys call the shots, so, you know. If you decide that you want us to move monies, we'll then introduce you guys to the hurdles, and I shouldn't say hurdles, the processes. In place, because it'll require commission, it may require.
Well, yeah, that's what.
Yeah.
We have to rely on your suggestions, because you all are.
Take a look at the budget and see where, see where we're spending money on, and what we have is spending money on, and we wanna continue. And it's gonna be the same for next year, no matter what it is, we're not getting any more money.
Yes.
Bottom line, like I said, you as the board, you're the one who, you could say, forget it, we're just gonna be open this, and that's it, and we'll deal with it. And we will.
Well, I think we lean on staff recommendation the most. And we're not gonna say bottom line, we're gonna help you get there, and we're looking at what the citizens want, what we have to do with the M O E. But I do think, I, I don't know how we're ever gonna get to more people without getting a larger budget. And I don't think we're ever gonna solve this unless we're gonna.
Why, again, this is opening up a big can, but, well. Why did this, I won't even say it, this is, yeah.
Um, just so that, you know, um, the, the budget pre-Covid was two point six nine and change. We're not even close to that, so. Right now, the sustainability plan was put forth, voted on, approved, and it was partially implemented, there were two more months. Before leadership changed, and I'm bringing that up just so that we understand why we gave a lot of people full-time positions. We have asked if they would like to step back, they have not said that they would. Those who've said they would, we're taking them up on that offer, and that's happening, so with time. And dependent on, we already know that, no pressure, Chelsea, but Chelsea's doing gangbuster because she has that dedicated. And educated approach to our cafe and our meeting rooms, that, those are our revenue service, uh. Revenue streams that are pulling things up. As that increases, our options to increase personnel also increase, so. This year, we are, we've already bumped up. At our mid-year estimates, we increased. We went from a hundred and one thousand to a hundred and thirty-five thousand, because it looks like we're gonna bring in another thirty thousand. Above what we planned, so there is potential, we've just got to. I think move slow. And have the end goal in mind, I don't, I think we're going to tie ourselves in knots if we go, okay. On March sixteenth of two thousand twenty, we closed at sixty-nine and a half hours doing this services. July first of two thousand twenty-two, we're gonna open up doing the same exact thing.
So then I guess we need you guys to tell us what it takes to get to Sunday, because we need to know how many people and what money.
Would you like a, are you wanting like a timeframe with that, or, I'm just trying to?
I mean, I guess maybe the one to five or whatever it was. I mean, I think there has been end game, right, for us to reach you, and we need you to tell us what you need to get there. And then we need to figure it out.
I'd like to know if, if opening till nine o'clock at night makes a difference. On Fridays and Saturdays, or Thursdays and Fridays, or whatever, we all set a Sunday with this.
There's other reasons, you couldn't close at eight.
I agree.
That much traffic, eight to nine o'clock.
Yeah, you gotta figure out those four hours something.
So that's what we're saying, move this perhaps.
Okay, our hour is up, so I'm gonna table this until, until next week, or next month. So think about this seriously, and another thing we need to think about again is being eliminated. Late fees, and that was a big chunk of money. People who, if you're there, books on that, and we have really not addressed, we talked about that. And we have really not addressed, we talked about that. I think we talked about eliminating it, but that's something we can bring back, but no problem. So.
Can I just say one more brief thing? Well, we have an adjournment, so I can say it. If we were open on till about eight o'clock or nine o'clock, that would increase our revenue, because these meeting rooms would be utilized.
But they were on Sunday.
I thought we left them open anyway, and we just had.
No, it's, we, we, we didn't have any meetings after library closed on Fridays or Saturdays.
Okay, any other new discussion? Okay, see you next month. See you, see you at the meetings.